Good evening. It is Monday, October 2nd, 2023. This is a Carney Board of Alderman meeting. Calling meeting order. Shirley, have you had a chance to take role?
I have taken role. Everybody is present. Dan Holt is by Zoom, and you do have a call.
We have no public hearing scheduled this evening, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does the board have any items of discussion or questions on the consent agenda? See if we can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening.
Salute.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda passes unanimously. We have no ordinances to review this evening, no resolutions, so we'll move on to items for review and presentation. First up is Ryan Markart, our Assistant Park Director, to talk about the Carney Amphitheater upcoming season. Ryan, you have the floor.
Good evening. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Board. Before you, you have a memo from me. I was asked to outline a couple of different scenarios for what direction we could possibly go for the amphitheater in this coming season. I know we briefly talked about potentially doing pre-concerts, but I wanted to get this in front of you with kind of two options, kind of different extremes. First, with $150,000 budget, we can afford to do one to two national touring acts, plus our annual free July 3rd concert. Based on all the available data we've been able to pull together, we can expect up to about a $75,000 deficit between expenses and revenue. The second option is kind of a more modest proposal. $25,000 budget, five free concerts, so we're talking about five grand to show. July 3rd would, of course, be included in that as well. We can expect up to about a $15,000 deficit between revenue and expenses for that. It's the Park Department's recommendation to choose option two. We kind of, we have the following reasons why. Number one, the concert industry as a whole is down very significantly over the last five years. Fans are definitely being more guarded with their discretionary income, choosing to spend more on the kind of the can't-miss shows, such as the shows at Arrowhead and T-Mobile, other municipally-run venues in Kansas City Metro. We actually did a poll at the beginning of the year, talking to several of them. They all kind of report the same thing. They're having a lot of trouble getting national touring acts to even break even, let alone make any money off of them. You know, over the last 10 years, the cost of these emerging kind of mid-level, we call them, national touring acts has almost quadrupled, while the ticket cost expectations, of course, have only gone up just very slightly. Privately-held venues booking the same caliber of acts that we would be able to afford to bring in, in our opinion, have a major advantage because they can keep up to, you know, 100% of their liquor and food receipts, in addition to any ticket or sponsor revenue as well. Pardon me. Over the last 15 years or so, you know, since we opened the amphitheater, there have been, we were kind of the first one, but three more have emerged in Carney, are kind of a renewed effort in Gladstone, Grandview, and Lee Summit, with another potentially coming online in Cameron in the next few years. Pardon me. All these venues are kind of targeting the same mid-level artists that are, that work for the budget range that they're given. And this, this competition is kind of severely hampering each other and each other's abilities to, you know, break even or make a profit. And add on to that, there are several dozen privately-held venues that have kind of emerged in the last 15 years that are also going for the same level and same caliber of mid-level artists that is affordable for a venue such as ours. Finally, the recent National Community Survey that we partake in indicated a strong desire from our community to have more opportunities for social and community gatherings. And we, as Parks Department, believe that these five free concerts could promote goodwill within the community and kind of help fulfill that need. It's our belief that the atmosphere fostered by such events is more important than the name of the performer onstage. And I am certainly welcome for any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Ryan, what has been the attendance for the, say, last year, or this, or this summer, this last summer? What was the attendance for the concerts that we provided?
Well, it varies per event. Naturally, we had a holdover show with the Shooting Star Concert from the year previous that was postponed till this year. That was a well-attended event, about 15, almost 1,600 people at that event. You know, the smaller events, of course, attract a smaller audience, but it seems to be a more localized audience, so we can expect, you know, between 500 and 1,000 at those kind of events.
Ryan, these national acts, what roughly, what does each? And I'm sure they vary, but what is, what does one of those cost?
Well, it's changed a lot, you know, since we started doing the amphitheater. You know, we like to tout Justin Moore as one of our biggest success stories. When we booked him in 2009, he cost us $10,000 to book. And we did that. He had one song on the radio at the time. It was a hit. And we were able to secure him for $10,000. Nowadays, if you get one hit song on the radio, you're looking at almost a minimum of 40,000 to 50,000. And that's, you know, that's with one hit. The landscape has really changed. Yeah, it's the main way these artists are able to make money is touring, and they've unlocked the code.
So, so the only way that we are generating income is from ticket sales?
Ticket sales, sponsorship, and our cut of the concessions.
Okay. What is our cut of the concessions?
It's currently 25%.
Any other questions for the board? Any other feedback from the Parks Department?
Ryan hit it on the, on the head. The, the national acts have just skyrocketed. $35,000 to $40,000 for a single song, radio, act. It's crazy.
And I would add, and that in our mind, it represents a huge gamble each time we, you know, open the doors with one of those kinds of acts.
I believe the, the Parks Department, in preparation of next year's budget and other tasks, are looking for the board's desire on a motion to either host one or two national touring acts or a motion to host five free local and regional acts for the 2024 amphitheater season. If there's anybody on the board that would like to make a motion on even one of those requests, or options, rather.
I personally believe that the second option and hosting five free acts is the better choice because I do agree with Ryan and Eric. I think it will foster more goodwill within our community. And even if a person isn't totally focused on whatever the style of music is, whether it's a blues and jazz or country, they're more likely just to come out for the camaraderie and the atmosphere if it's free than if it's not. So, it's hard to find one style of music that a lot of our people will appreciate to pay a ticket price for.
Can I consider that a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the five free concerts for the 2024 Carney Amphitheater Summer Concert Series.
We have a motion by Alderman Spencer to host five free local and regional acts, concerts for the 2024 Carney Amphitheater Summer Concert Series. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Randy.
Second, and by Alderman Holt. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? You're not? Yeah, okay. All right. Motion passes unanimously. The next option is, I'm sorry, rather, next item of discussion is facility option for the Carney Aquatics Center. And our Park Director, Eric Marshall, has the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, Sheila, and Alderman members. Tuesday, September 19th, Lauren Osborne with Water's Edge Aquatics came to our park board meeting and gave us the results of the last survey that was taken, survey number two. And what this did is, the, the survey two was for two options. We need to get it narrowed down to what the public would want going forward if they had the features and options that they would like in an aquatic facility. The two options were outdoor aquatics and indoor aquatics or indoor aquatics and with recreation, dry space, walking trail, fitness area, et cetera. I don't know if you guys were able to listen to the park board meeting or not, but after about two and a half hours of discussion, it was a really good park board meeting. The park board came up with option two, in which that is in front of you. In the agenda packet, both options are, but I, I laid out the option two for you earlier today. Those pages show you renderings, not actual plans, but just some renderings of the possibilities that option two with the dry rec space that would be offered to the public. On these renderings, one thing I, I want to drive home is I would hope that we leave the fitness area at it is shown on that right now on the second floor. The reason being, there was a lot of discussion at the park board meeting. But if we would drop the walking trail down to the lower level, and again, this is just, these are just preliminary, but I, I feel really strongly about this. The walking trail could hinder some seniors or people that want to use that walking trail with patrons that might be using the gym, balls, volleyballs, basketballs that might go out. And, you know, they might be apprehensive to use that walking trail. So, I want to drive that home. I really think we should leave that fitness area up on the second floor, along with the walking track. It was a very tight split with the options, between option one and option two. But later on down the road, it showed a 4% gap that more people would use the indoor aquatics and dry rec space because they, you can use it year-round. And that's what I think it really boiled down to. People wanted more bang for the buck, with the potential of adding an outdoor aquatic center at a later date. The park board did come to a consensus and voted to send to you, the Board of Aldermen, option two is their recommendation to you to be placed on the ballot in April of 2024. And I am open to questions. And Ryan, if I missed something that you wanted to add from that meeting, please feel free to do so.
Anything else from staff?
Can I mention on that?
Absolutely. I was getting ready to give you the floor as our park board liaison. Go ahead.
Yeah, actually, the Parks Board voted to agree to option two, but they agreed to do away with the above walking trail and get a bigger area. It's kind of like a kiddie pool over there, because if we go with option two, we have the walking trail up there. That's a very small area, and there's no indoor swimming suitable for children. So, to make it where it's an indoor facility that would be used by children as well, of making that a zero entrance pool over there where the therapy pool was, and make that bigger by doing away with the above walking trail. Because the, the issue that we have is if we go with option two and we don't give something to the little kids, then even Lauren had agreed that most likely, people with children will end up just going to Plattsburgh, or they'll go somewhere where there's something more for the kids. Because the way that that is situated, it's an indoor pool for the swim teams and not for little kids, because that is going to be four foot deep at the end. They have to have it four feet to do the swim lane so they can turn around. So, there needed to be an indoor pool that would allow children to be able to use an indoor play area and, and stuff. It wouldn't have any apparatuses in it, but it would be a zero entrance pool there for, for them. And that is what the Parks Board had, had agreed on, on doing. I understand that Eric's wanting to do the upper walking trail. I under, I understand the need for that. However, I do think when it comes time for voting, I think if we don't give some kind of accommodation to families with some children, I, I think we're going to lose some vote because they're just taking kids on to Plattsburgh. That, that's my two cents on that.
Thank you, Dan, for your comments. The following day, I had a conversation with Lauren on this because that's, that was the recommendation. We wanted to think about the, the youth and the kiddies and, and things of that nature, make it fun for them in the indoor atmosphere. But we asked Lauren to think outside the box. We think we're going to have a, a solution for that to make it work. She has sent us some renderings. There, there's going to be more details and more photographs and more in-depth line items coming down the pike. But we think we've got that taken care of, where it will suffice what the park board wants with the kiddie area in that area, where then we can leave the fitness, the walking trail up on the second floor, and still accommodate what the park board wants as well on the, on the lower level. We think we can get it done.
Yeah, I would like to see that. I know, I don't want to speak for my wife's grandparents, but, you know, her grandpa is almost 90 and
Sure.
just had some knee replacement surgeries, and I don't know how comfortable he would feel walking around basketball games or volleyball games. But I also hear what Alderman Holt's saying and the park board's saying about making sure that we're working to, to have a, a place for everybody. So, I'd really be interested to see what she comes up with and, you know, what that would do to kind of the overall cost.
And, and like I said, these are all renderings and, and things of that nature. But I get what Dan is saying, and that's what the park board wanted. We asked Lauren to, to think outside the box. She's done that. We think we're going to be able to accommodate everything. But the main thing is, is we are recommending to you, from the park board, option two, to go to the ballot, because
Yeah, so this isn't a final set in stone plan. You're, you're looking for
It is not.
approval to either go with the outdoor option or this option here.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else from the board on the topic before we consider a motion?
So, I, I was in attendance at the park board meeting, and yeah, there was, there was lots, lots of, of discussion back and forth. And, and like Alderman Holt said, they, the final was to bring everything down to the first floor. But to me, there's a potential liability issue of having a track around basketball, volleyball courts, and, and potential for somebody to get hit with a basket, a stray basketball or, or whatever. And so that, that was concerning to me. And, and I know Eric and, and Ryan have wanted a space to do programming. You know, with, with having the second floor, that allows a program area to have classes or whatever, the Zumba. And I know the people that I've talked to, you know, one of the reasons they like the rec center was there was the ability to, if you didn't want to walk, you could go work out with weights or, and so it, it will be interesting to see what Lauren comes up with. And yeah, I, I think we need to have something for the, for the kiddies. You know, we do have the splash pad, but, you know, I, I think if we can get the most voters, I think we have to be able to combine both aspects of it in order to get the most votes.
Correct.
So, it'll be interesting to see what she comes up with, but.
Yeah, my concern was also with the, the upstairs walking trail. I didn't get a chance to talk to Lauren. I wanted to, but one of my concerns was elderly people getting upstairs. There is no elevator in this rendering. So, I didn't know if way we can make the stairs more easily, what do they call it? You know, where they're not as steep or whatever, to help elderly people get up to that walking trail. If, if we're going to have a second floor walking trail.
Yeah, I think code would require an elevator. There'd have to be an elevator if there's a second floor.
Yeah.
The rendering didn't show one. That's plausible.
Is there any other questions or feedback from the board?
I definitely think we need to make this inclusive with, for little ones too. Because if this pool starts at four foot deep, that is hard for children under about six to accommodate them. They have to be in there with floaties or some type of flotation device. So, yeah, I would like to see it be a bit more all-inclusive.
Sheila, do you have something to say?
Yes, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware, though, that the $30 million budget, this rendering is what, what we could afford for $30 million. When we asked Lauren to come up with a, out, think outside the box option, knowing that it might add additional cost, and just wanting to understand what, what could our option be and what that additional cost is so that you guys can have all that information when it is time to decide on whether or not to put the questions on the ballot. So, and there would be options, maybe we wouldn't do geo bonds, but maybe we would use some of that sales tax revenue to pay that service on certificates of participation or some supplemental cost. So, I want to be very upfront that that might be an option because it will cost more to, to think outside the box and come up with a better solution. And I had one other thing that I was going to say, but I guess I lost it, so.
I'd rather do it right the first time. And I know sometimes that does involve a bit more cost, but I agree it has to have an elevator. That's part of the accessibility of it. So, yeah, I'd rather that it, do it right the first time.
There's no other questions or discussion? Anybody like to make a motion on either one of the options?
I'll make a motion to go with, to follow the park board's recommendation of option two.
Second.
We got a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion to accept the park board's recommendation to move forward with facility option two is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no mayor's communications this evening. We'll move on to the city administrator report.
Tomorrow evening at the Carney Midcontinent Library Branch, there's going to be a transportation master plan workshop. I would invite all of you to come. If you can't make tomorrow night, there is going to be another option on October 11th. Tomorrow night begins at 6:00 PM, and so I hope you can make it. Then, David, do you want to tell them?
Yeah, this Saturday, October 7th, 8 to noon, we have our every other year Household Hazardous Waste Mobile Collection Event at Mac Porter Park. It used to be down here at City Hall, but a few times ago, we started doing it at Mac Porter Park. Circulation runs a little bit better, but it's open to everybody in the community and in the area.
There's kind of a crazy local guy that's involved with that, isn't there?
Couple of them, I think.
Yeah.
But paint is what they collect the most of, but they'll take batteries, household chemicals, non-st肮ening chemicals, bulbs, fluorescent bulbs, light bulbs, all kinds of things. It's limited to the first 300 cars, and we hit about 300 right about noon each time. So, we'll, we'll probably get that towards the end of the
The next item is just to remind everyone that the Pitbull Pollco survey is going to be open until Thursday, October 12th. Some of the things that we have done to encourage people, and we have, we've received about 700 and close to 800 responses so far. Not, a little over half of those are actually verified respondents, and we really are going to be considering verified respondents. So, I would encourage everyone to become verified if they, if they feel strongly one way or the other. And I think it, it only takes a few minutes. We have put posters around town with the QR code. We put it on the back of utility bills. We have advertised with the newspaper. We've advertised with the radio station. We've put it on social media. We are doing everything that we can to get the word out because I think it's very important that the more people that participate, the, the better information you guys will have. I will do another Facebook post. It would be really helpful if you guys could share the city's Facebook posts to help get that out. And, because I know it's important that you guys have a lot of feed, a lot of good feedback. And then the only thing I have left is that our next board meeting will be October 16th at 6:30 PM.
Right. We'll move on to Alderman discussion. Alderman Spencer?
Nothing.
Alderman Holt?
I don't have anything tonight.
Alderman Lehman?
I have gotten some more concerns about trash service. I don't know, you know, with this new schedule, they're, they're having issues. You know, when I came to the meeting tonight, the, the recycling in my neighborhood still hadn't been picked up. And I've, I've let city staff know about that. But I've gotten several comments about what, did we change trash services? What, you know, what happened? So, it's, it's not working the way it was before.
Well, I'll tell you, Friday mid-afternoon, I believe, I got an email from Tyler from Republic letting me know that he and his other managers had decided to postpone our bulk item pickup for this week. And I said, no, staff's already spent time and resources. People have already put stuff out. And by the way, we're not happy with several items. So, Sheila and I have a meeting with him and some additional managers at Republic. So, I would just encourage the board, anytime you have constituent concerns with trash, let staff know. And I've asked Sheila to make sure that we're documenting any concerns because we definitely got, got an issue to take care of. Uh, because we definitely got got an issue to take care of.
I will say that last week was the least amount of complaints that we took in this building. We only had like two or four complaints. Uh, some of it was late. I mean, they are running late. That's not uncommon, but it was better last week than it had. And then, but now I expect today is probably not going to be. Do them doom.
It was hard to send them a cordial email back, but I think it did a pretty good job. So.
Yeah, that's all I have.
I'll I'll make sure the board is uh updated once we have that meeting.
Yeah.
Alderman Barker?
Well, I would add to David's comment. I too am am still getting, like, if I'm out in public anywhere. Sometimes not even in public, I'm getting beat up over the trash and. I mean, that's part of the job. I get it, but I feel like we need to hold our feet to the fire just a little bit because it's it's an issue. Um, and then I just wanted to kind of add a comment about the concert. I I did vote to go with the. The lesser, the less expensive route this year. I think mostly because um. We have a budget and we need to stay within our budget and certainly replacing sidewalks and things like that are are important. And we should, that's where we need to be spending our money. I would like for us to revisit this in a year or two, maybe as the economy changes a little bit, maybe as this, the. The uh city is in a different place financially. I think there is value in bringing some bigger name concerts to the community because I think it brings people. Outside our community. Um, it it helps our tourism. I think it helps people. See our community in a in a in a light that they don't, wouldn't necessarily see. Um, I've had people. Comment to me that they didn't know that there was an amphitheater in Carney or they or they didn't know how nice it was. And I think there's value in that. Um, you know, it's a, it's a great facility and and I would like. Um, to see it utilized in a, in that manner at some point. I. I, you know, I I listen to a lot of music. I see a lot of live music in in my personal life and and. I I just think that there's a, there's a need for. A place to see some good live music.
Thank you. We're going to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Server, have a good evening. Thank you.